Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. This is Night City Council. I'm John John the Wise and I have with me none other than James Hutt himself, the mayor of Balance Town. How are you, James?
I'm doing great. How are you doing, John John?
Doing well, man. I missed you. Everything is great. It's been hectic with me. I've been doing that under the Crimson Sky thing. I'm sure you've seen that. Yeah, so that's, turns out, it's a pretty big undertaking. Dude, it's so stressful. You have no idea how stressed out I've been with it, but uh, it's, it's happening. It's like actually becoming something awesome. I'm really enjoying it.
Right on.
So yeah, but um, yeah, before we get into all of that, this is the show where we answer questions for the community. And so if you guys have any questions, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. That's how you can find me. Let me see your questions and then we'll put it onto the list. And also, we like to talk about free DLCs. That's what this show is for. We're here to let you guys know about the cool stuff that James and everybody in our tell story and is cooking up behind the scenes to inject into your games. And today we are talking about salvaging Night City.
That's right.
But spoiler alert, it's actually not just Night City. You could, you could use it anywhere and I'll talk about how you could do that.
Yeah, you absolutely could be anywhere where you could salvage.
Exactly.
We put the word Night City in a lot of titles, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Night City, Night City, the only reason I'm not playing in Night City is because I played in Night City for like 15 years. You know what I mean? Like that was my own, that was the one cyberpunk setting that we ever played in. So I'm trying to move things around and do something different. You know what I mean? Have you played? Have you played in cyberpunk in any other setting other than Night City?
Yes, yes. I've done some convention games in Oregon. Uh, and in uh, the Pacific Con Fed.
Oh, nice. How did that, how was that change up for you? Was it any different?
Well, for me, it was a chance to go over 2020 material of those areas. Uh, and kind of, you know, play around with it, throw it up in the air and uh, play with it uh, live, which was fun. Both of those were more of like improv-y style DM sessions. I did not do a write-up. Don't worry, there isn't a secret. Uh, there isn't a secret adventure text we haven't put out for it. Uh, this was just a con game and just for funsies.
Yeah, those con games.
Sometimes I use con games as like, I'm gonna try this thing out. And then sometimes I use them as, I'm gonna do improv about this in this area.
Yeah, I was, I was about to say that with con games, you could try so many things because you're like, you know what? When am I gonna get this opportunity to just try it with a random group of people? That can literally, they can test it for you. You know what I mean?
Kind of, yeah. And um, and you can be very involved with that test because it's, it's all fresh people you've never played with before. Uh, and they showed up to play your game, right?
Yeah.
This isn't really relevant to the, to the DLC at hand.
People love this. People love hearing about uh, us playing and stuff like that. I've gotten good feedback about that stuff. When we were talking about our games and stuff, people like it, so. So don't worry, James.
Suggest, suggest those variety content. Uh, suggestions. We need more help. We need more help. Help us be normal humans and uh, people who answer questions on the internet.
Yeah, help us be interesting.
Help us be interesting.
Yeah. Well, hey, why don't we get straight into it? Because uh, we have some questions from the community as well that we want to get to. And I'm actually excited to talk about this DLC. Because I told James, I was like, hey, let's lay off a week. I'm recording under the Crimson Sky and I think I'm gonna use this DLC in my game. So why don't I use it? I'll come back, we'll talk about it.
Oh yeah, I got about how that went, by the way, John John. You gotta tell me.
Yeah.
I'll learn when the audi- I'll learn as the audience does.
Exactly.
So what do you want to do? Questions first?
No, no, let's talk about the DLC first.
DLC.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the DLC first. Um, salvaging Night City. Where can they find that, James?
Uh, artelsauriangames.com. I wanna, first thing I want to say about this is this is Jay Gray uh, at his best. Uh, he did the grand majority of writing on this while I was working on other stuff. Uh, and he came to me and he was like, what do you think of this? And I'm like, what? Oh, this is an attack. You know, you're coming over here, you know? This is too good. Stop it.
That's so funny.
Um, anyway, and then I, I went through all the stages of grief and they said, we should do this and this. And then um, we put it out. So this is all Jay Gray. This is like me. This is all Jay Gray. I, I barely edited.
Jay also did one of my other favorite DLCs, Night City Weather.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That's another Jay Gray. That's another uh, child of the gray as well. They both work well and um, I'm, I'm big fans of both of them. I'm super excited to use Salvaging Night City 2 because it kind of feels like something tech should be able to do. And now they are.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but how did you use it?
Yeah, you wanna get, you don't wanna wait, huh? You're like, let's, I wanna know.
Well, well, tell these people, I'm, I'm assuming it went well.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't tell me.
The short story, the TLDR is, it went, it went great. It went really well. So um, just to give you guys an idea, the, the idea of what this DLC does is in the beginning of it, the first two pages kind of tells you how to wrap your mind around salvage. What kind of salvage is in the hot zone, the environment around there, the people, the scrapyards, combat zones. All this information to really put your mind in that place. And after that, then it gets into mechanics, fun mechanics. We all love charts. We all love rolling on charts. We all love trying different things. That's what this is. Um, so basically in my campaign, I don't want to give out too, I don't want to give away too much, but there was an opportunity for my players to salvage. And I had already planned for some stuff that they could find there. You know what I mean? I did my own GM-placed stuff. But then I realized like, oh, I can use this as a supplement to my ideas. So it's like, they find that one thing, you know, but then there's also another thing that they can find there too. And it injected this like randomness that uh, we would have to like be creative about to try to work it out and stuff like that. So, James, why don't you tell us uh, do you have the DLC up? You don't, right? You don't have it up with you?
I remember the great majority of the things that, I have a great memory.
Yeah, so talk about, talk about the categories and whether the random or deciding on them.
So um, whether they're random or deciding on them?
Yeah, whether the, you pick a random category or whether you want to pick a specific category, because that's significant.
Yes, okay. I'll give the general mechanics. Um, so when you salvage stuff as per this DLC, um, you spend a week of downtime and you roll a basic tech, I believe. Uh, to find some items. Um, if you want to find specific items, the DV goes up. Uh, this is important because what you're finding are items that have been destroyed that if they were repaired could be usable. Um, and uh, the um, of course, the tech is the the primary uh, person for this. They're the person that's um, gonna be able to do the salvaging and do the specific one and then hit the high table so they can get that $1,000 item. .gs and hear steam coming out of your ears.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it sounds like a train starting up. An old-style train.
You want me to give my power gamer buddies more items?
It's fine if you give them destroyed items because what you're giving them is a project. You're not giving them a finished gun.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Uh, you're giving them something that they're gonna have to spend more downtime in order to make. And guess what? It could have been doing with both of those downtime sessions. Hustling, just making money.
Yeah.
Um, now this is fun because you can get broken $500 items and then spend more downtime to repair them. And now, haha, I did not need my fixer to get this. I made it myself. Um, that's where this part is cool. Uh, it gives a reason to have basic tech for somebody who's not a tech. Uh, because even if you're not a tech, you can repair damaged items. What techs do is of course, they go the next step. They, they go all the way. Um, but this allows people to be a scrapper type uh, person, a reclamer, just like you can be a nomad without having the nomad roll ability. Um, it allows you to be a scrap uh, reclamer uh, without having to be a tech. Uh, anyway, that's the gist of how it works. Um, of course, there's also a chart where if you roll poorly, um, bad things that can happen because we didn't want it to be a completely safe activity.
Perilous things.
Um, I will say that if you spend too much time um, doing this and not paying your rent, you will get kicked out of your apartment.
Oh yeah, there's no mercy in the dark future for not paying rent.
Right. I would say that this is, this is kind of power game. Best part is we get to power game downtime too. You get power game when combat, you get to power game when you're making your character and you get to power game during downtime. You're power gaming all the time.
Oh man, that's so funny.
In your game. Uh, so this is, this is like a therapy style. Therapy is a very valuable downtime option. But it's a therapy level avail thing where therapy can fail and you can waste it that time. But it's for acquiring things that you can't without a fixer or an item.
Well, salvaging, I mean, if you fall into bad rolling or if you even find something, but it's not that big of a deal, you wasted a week of your downtime just to do that, right?
Yeah, well, you always find something that you want in that, in that price category. Um, you get to select the item.
Yeah.
Um, but you might, if you're, if you're bad enough at salvaging, you might go I can't, I'll just take what I can find. You know what I mean? To get that lower DV so you can get access. Um, to that, to that space. And you might end up with armor and you were completely fine with your light armor jack. But you're like, I found flak armor.
What did you say? That, that's exactly what happened with one of my players. They found flak armor. What? Can you hear me? Did I lose it?
No, no, I, I know you rolled flak armor, John John.
I didn't roll anything. They did.
Uh-huh.
So, let me tell you how it went down. Uh, first of all, uh, to elaborate on what James said, step one is you decide on a category or you can roll randomly. There's uh, five categories. You roll on a D6. It's one, cyberware, two, weapons, three and four is general gear, five is armor and six is cyber decks and programs. So your netrunner is one of you rolling sixes. But you can decide, hey, I don't want to roll for it. I want to decide a specific category. Now, what does that mean? That means in step two, if you just rolled on the chart, the DV is far less to try to find something within 10 Eddie buck, 10 Eddies, 20 Eddies, 50 Eddies, 100, 500 and 1,000. Those are the different worths. Those are the different DVs. If you rolled for it, it's, it's a lower DV. If you pick a specific category, it's more difficult. It's a higher DV. So your tech spends that one week of downtime rolling on this chart. And they say, you know what? Uh, I got a netrunner friend. Uh, you know what? I'm gonna pick cyber decks and programs. Let's see if I could find him something. Uh, specific category, if I want to find him something worths anything, I gotta roll a 29. That's a 500. Right? Or, or a 21, uh, we'll find him, you know, some like small programs and stuff like that. So what I really want is to try to get that 500 one up there. So you roll and hopefully if you're a really good tech and some luck or whatever you can throw in there to make that, pass that DV, you find that item. But James, what happens if they roll a one?
Um, then there is a dangers table that they have to roll on. Um, I will say that the dangers can be mitigated by buying gear to mitigate dangers, specific. Uh, this is more of a, and if you mitigate all the dangers that you can mitigate, there's still stuff that you can't mitigate. So it helps remove danger from the situation, but there will almost be some danger.
Yeah, James, do you have a D6 on you?
I, I do, I do.
Do you want to show the whole world your new, your cool D6?
Oh.
He showed me his D6, guys.
Alright, I'm still working on that. It's not.
Okay, prototype, fair enough. Uh, roll on that D6. Tell me what you got.
Okay. A three.
I love that you had to count. Uh, alright, three. You are exposed to high-level radiation, C, CPR page 181, the rulebook, the core rulebook.
Well.
Yeah, you did not. For one D10 rounds. And as James said, a radiation suit negates the effect. So hopefully you had your radiation suit on for some reason.
I'm getting a D10. I should have a D10 somewhere in this house.
He's getting the D10. This is exciting.
Uh, seven.
Seven, okay. Seven, seven rounds of high-level radiation. I don't remember what that means because I haven't actually.
I'm pretty sure that's the on-fire uh, status. So seven times three, I believe it's seriously on fire.
Ooh, sorry about that. So 20, 21?
Yeah. Not good when you're doing downtime because then remember at the end of that downtime, you're gonna have to you'll need more downtime.
You need more downtime to recover.
Uh, right. And uh, 21, let's say I had a body of seven, that's an extra three days. I'm like, guys, can we wait three days?
Yeah.
You know, that, that makes uh, that pisses my friends off and it puts us close to rent day. Um, calendaring is really fun if you're a GM in this game. You can really turn the screws there. Uh, on players.
Let me ask you something. When it says rounds, are we talking about the same rounds in combat? So three seconds, basically. Let's say it feels an out-of-combat thing. So you're talking about uh, seven times three, 21 seconds goes by and you get that much, oh my God, that's, that's pretty significant to take that much damage.
It is, it is, it is pretty significant. Um, there, see, it's um, we didn't, some people like to do downtime on table. Uh, you know what I mean? Uh, like um, like if you do downtime and you're a media, then you get rumors for that week.
Mm-hmm.
As a GM, I would never not give a media their rumors because good lord, they already played a media.
Yeah.
You know, you know, you paid the cost to be the boss. You get your media, you get your rumor every week. Because thank you for not, you know, being the third netrunner or something.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, if you're gonna make a net architecture for your netrunner, you gotta have rumors for your media.
Absolutely. Um, and it's fun. It's the fun thing you get to do for them.
Yeah, it's fun to be different. Uh, but anyway, uh, moving on. So let's say you didn't go through any of those perils. That's just like some kind of fun thing that, that can happen. You can also get a critical injury. I believe, uh, which is, is nuts. If you rolled a one on that chart, structure collapsed on top of you, take 66 damage, reduced by armor. You also take a critical injury. Roll on the critical injury chart to determine it. Um, so you know, you go salvaging for your netrunner buddy, trying to find him some programs. You end up with a broken rib. Uh, which is no joke. So. Yeah.
I will say, it is, it is done during downtime. So it's not like you're in a situation where that broken rib immediately becomes an issue, but a downtime critical injury is a pretty nasty thing to have happen to you.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's, it's bad for your time. Um, it could cost you a bunch of money. And uh, sort of negate the reason you're rolling on this table.
Exactly.
Um, that being, uh, remember, this is just a general reminder that you can use luck on your rolls. Um, and it's the way that you're gonna hit those big numbers because it kind of makes sense. You gotta know where to look. You're always kind of, kind of lucky to find the good stuff, right?
Yeah. Oh, and I'm sorry. I think we should have uh, clarified. When you're doing the skill check, it's basic tech is the skill that you guys use. Yeah, you roll basic tech uh, to determine whether you pass the DV.
And by the way, you're using basic tech for a non-maker specialty purpose. So you get to add your um, you get to add your um, the bonus from field expertise to this.
Oh wow, so on top of your tech roll.
Yeah. Because this is using a tech for a non-maker specialty purpose. This isn't a maker specialty purpose. This is a salvage roll.
That's right. Oh, interesting.
But that's why you're so hot. It's because techs can really get there.
Yeah, that's uh, and we'll get to that actually. So should I talk about my experience with this DLC?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so um, my players had.
From the um, the time they rolled, what was the thing they rolled again?
For what?
I don't know. You go, go, you go.
James, you're halting the show. Friends who slay together. I just saw your shirt. That's funny. Um, so yeah, my players had an opportunity to salvage. And I decided, you know, I did have some cool things that they can get. Like one was like a really cool gun. The other one had like mods and other kind of crazy stuff. Um, oh, you know what? I just realized this is gonna come out after. Oh, but I shouldn't, I shouldn't spoil it just in case people didn't watch. I was gonna say, come, this is gonna come out after my episode airs because it already rendered. Anyway, I digress.
Spoil everything.
Spoil it. So basically they have the opportunity to salvage things and when they get to there, I thought to myself, I know this is a downtime activity, but why don't I give them the opportunity to just roll on this chart right now, here in person? And uh, whatever they get, that's what they get, right? By the way, it says remaining meeting time nine minutes.
What is that?
What the fuck? What happened?
Uh, I uh, I'm, I'm too cheap to pay for Zoom.
So what should we do?
Um, go to the back in like five minutes.
So do you, can you just make a new one after?
Yeah.
Oh, okay then, that's fine. So we'll just, we'll just watch the countdown timer together.
I can't see the countdown timer.
Okay, well, it's on nine minutes, so I'll let you know.
Okay.
Alright, so um, so basically I planted some stuff that they can have. And then I also told them that they can just roll on this chart. I know it's a downtime activity. But I decided, why don't I just see what happens? Because if a peril happens, like the radiation or a critical injury, that's right here, right now. And that's interesting. So um, anyway, they, they decided to just roll randomly on the chart. Two of the players rolled randomly. And when I've got to the section where it said, use your basic tech skill to salvage things, I didn't really understand why in the moment. So I made like a GM decision to say, no, no, I think conceal reveal is more appropriate here. Because you're like going through stuff, you're rummaging things. Um, and I had them roll conceal reveal. But then I kind of changed it and I said, but then it says basic tech here. So then my tech got excited because he's like, oh, my basic tech is insane. So there was a point where he said, I, uh, the, the weapon that they found, what can I salvage apart for it to kind of like repair it so we can have this crazy cool weapon? And I told him, yeah, sure, uh, do a conceal reveal to see if you find it in one of the boxes in this place. And he's like, oh man, I was hoping I could do basic tech. And I said, yeah, I know, but I just don't see how it fits. I'll let you guys know now, after the, the session, it hit me like that lightbulb moment, like, oh my God, he's using his basic tech skill to salvage through equipment to find the parts. So there's equipment there. It's like a bunch of stuff and you're like, hey, let me pop this thing open, look at its guts. And see if I could find something that I can use as a power source for this thing. So I told him, hey, look, retroactively, I'm just giving it to you because I, I dropped the ball on that one.
Yeah, serves you right to not follow raw without question.
I know. I, I've done it before. I did it with dodging bullets. I'm on, I'm now dodging bullets. What else did I do? What was the other thing?
Uh, roll under luck?
Roll under. No, 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 that's, that's a homebrew. I'm doing that. No, the beating the DV. I wasn't doing beating the DV. I was like, matching it is okay. Yeah, now, now you, now you gotta beat it with me. So you know, hey, look, we're trying new things out.
Yeah, I, I hear it.
Yeah, so.
It's like you guys had a cool experience on table. I'm happy it worked out.
Yeah, so basically the categories that came up didn't really work out. Like they didn't, eh, one of them would found like 20 Eddies worth of uh, cyberware. That's nothing. That's like pieces. The other guy found 100 bucks, 100 Eddies worth of armor. That's a li- light armor jack right there.
Right, light armor jack. It's not a tech.
I, I kept it as brand new. So I didn't make it destroyed.
That's OP.
Yeah, I, like I said, hey, look, let me tell you something about myself, James. Sometimes I'm like, hey, this sounds like a cool idea. Is it overpowered? Eh, we'll find out. Sometimes it serves me, other times I'm like, damn it, what did I do? So yeah, don't you shake your head no at me, okay? Yes, yes. Uh, oh, no, no, don't put that curse on me, James. I don't know what tomb you took that from, but you need to go put it back. Anyway, for podcast listeners, don't look at the YouTube video because then you'll be cursed too. So anyway, um, that was it. That was the situation. That's how I used this DLC. I think I'll use it the same way again, but I'll let them roll basic tech instead. And I think I'll add the caveat that it is a broken thing that they'll still need to repair.
So here's, here's a cool thing. Um, that I want to make sure people know. Um, it's that um, when you get the broken thing, if you want to use it like the next day, it's likely you're a tech. And that's what jury rig is for.
Yep, you can use your jury rig. I believe it's called uh, field repair?
It's in field repair. It's called field repair, but I believe I used the term jury rig in there because it used to be jury rig.
It used to be, yeah.
I, to make sure that they could still do that.
Good on you, good on you for that one. Yeah.
Do a callback to a, you can use the 2020 style skill as a tech to get this destroyed item working for 15 minutes.
Yeah.
However much time you, you can based on your uh, roll ability.
Yeah, I like that. So but you can, you can make it, that item work. You could put it together with another thing. So altogether it was fun. It was great. It was a great way to add things to my game. And added an element of randomness to the stuff that I had already planned beforehand. And it was like a perfect combination. I think like a little bit of planning, a little bit of chaos. You put it together and it makes something beautiful. So why don't we get, um, well, first of all, artelsauriangames.com DLCs downloads. That's where you guys can find it. It's free. You don't have to pay anything. Any, yeah, if anybody, if anybody charges you any money, they're scamming you. It's free. So yeah, go on out there. Um, alright, we'll get straight into the questions. Why don't we go ahead and do that?
Let's answer some questions, Chumba.
Okay, here we go. Uh, first one up is, I don't know if this has been covered, but I have a player who is wanting to play a fully transhuman character. The concept is their consciousness is uploaded into a mechanical body. My concern is how to apply damage to the character or like critical injuries and stuff like that. Uh, does this approach seem reasonable or is there an, an existing precedent which works? Thanks for all the great content. As ever, this is from Strive. Thank you, Strive, for the question.
Okay, Strive. Um, this is the realm of homebrew. So my questions do not um, constitute me um, writing any rule for this in live, okay? This is not, this is me helping strive, okay? If you're not strive, put your, put your hands in the air.
Yeah, every, everything from this point forward is homebrew.
Right. Um, so realistically, um, this player, I would have damage associated to the body that the player is inhibiting at the moment. Um, basically they still have HP, um, just like a real, real human, a, a real human does. Um, but it would be very difficult to actively um, threaten this player in, in an HP sense. Um, uh, I would say uh, you would homebrew-wise, you'd make them a netrunner probably. Or do they just give them netrunner four? If you, if they were an actual AI in the setting, it would be a lot more like just giving them netrunner 10 out of the bat, see what's up. Um, you'd have to make sure the other players are okay with this player's concept because what this player is asking for is I want to play. Um, you'd have to make sure the other players are okay with this player's concept, because what this player is asking for is I wanna play like. This is like in D and D where a player says, I wanna play as a dragon. Right? And if the other players are like, cool, you're my dragon friend, then that's totally chill and awesome. Um, but yeah, make them a level ten netrunner, um, just let them use whatever programs they want. With their action and that gets an approximation of what an AI would actually do if you fought it in the net. Since the AI is way better than you at netrunning. You're like a slug wearing a, you know, trying to move two levers. Right?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and the AI lives there, you know? Anyway, um, so. Give them normal HP when out of net stuff and then let them be. Uh, like a netrunner otherwise and give them very high netrunning levels. Um, just to make them not OP, just don't give them a roll ability. They're a special character anyways, right? Um, of course, they have to have interface, so I guess they already have a roll ability, but don't give them a hat on a hat. Um, you know, that would make the other. You know, uh, my friend, the dragon is cool as long as it's also, not also my friend, the dragon, who's also an amazing bard. Um, you know what I mean? Just let him play the monster shot block. Uh, don't, you know, put, stack these things on top of these things, cuz then the other players will feel. I think the other players feel. I don't know about your players.
You didn't even realize it and you just added a Team Fortress 2 reference again. A hat on a hat?
Hat on a hat. I, I love TF2.
We, we know, James.
Who doesn't like TF2?
Uh, come on, if you, I have like seven hundred hours in it.
Right, right. You'd have to be that one gray guy.
Yeah.
And not the one I work with. The one from TF2.
Gotcha.
Gray man. Yeah, I know the name of two, two characters.
Gray man.
Yeah, yeah.
So the way I, I would do it, if you're interested in hearing my point of view, James.
I'm trying to figure out if I'm done.
Oh.
Yes, I am done. I am done. That is my, that is my take. Uh, let them play their. Their powerful true AI character, uploaded consciousness character. And, um, let them be in a human body. Um, but in a human body, you know, with a little bit of cyberware maybe. Um, give them a neural link and that's how they got in. And just call that a, um, obviously, you'd want to, uh. Uh, play a full Borg to have them plugged into a full Borg, but I'm not gonna. The AI portion of it is the, the heart of the question. You can. Kind of put the full Borg under the table for now. Um. Uh, there's 2020 info in full Borgs if you wanna start your homebrew in that direction. But, uh, I think that the, the key part is they wanna, they don't wanna be a human. They wanna be in a consciousness that moves around. Is in the net. Anyway.
Yeah, sure. Well, first, my first question would be, is to assess whether this player is trying to run like a Terminator. Character, whereas just like this monstrous solo that goes around murdering everybody. Or do they wanna be like a fun quirky special character? That just adds something new, like for example, uh, in the No Latency Podcast, I did a special episode with them. One of the guys had a TV as a head, like that was his head. It was a TV. And I was like, dude, that's amazing. I love that. Like the TV changes channels for different facial expressions. That's something you, like, the player wanted to have fun with it. They did. It was charming. It was entertaining. And, um, if they, if your player wants to do something like that, I say, go for it. Go for it. Try to accommodate to them as much as you can. Usually with homebrew stuff, I always do like give and take. So, okay, you're a robot, you have a robot body. That means you are basically immune to any pain checks. You don't feel any pain. You don't have to roll resist torture drugs. But you are highly susceptible to EMP attacks. And you can't really wear armor because armor doesn't really make sense on you. It's like, maybe you can put on a flak vest. I think it might be better to make the whole body have an SDP, structural damage points. Just like a vehicle does and, or any of that stuff. And we can say when the, the body is destroyed, the player's not destroyed, the, the AI is still within a hard drive. But if there's electrical, if it dies by electrical damage. Or fire or radiation or any of that kind of stuff, then the character does die. So you just do that, you just lay like ground rules, work with the player, see how you can, you know. If they're okay with it, not okay with it, where they wanna go with it and try to accommodate for them. If it doesn't break your game. And, and.
Right.
Yeah.
Totally okay. Also, GM thing to say is, that sounds like. Uh, that's a little bit too much homebrew, you know what I mean? You don't have to say yes. You don't. Say yes is a great tool for a GM, but you don't have to say yes.
Yeah, sometimes your homebrew can be like disruptive, you know, like ha, like James said, having a dragon in the group. Is fun if everybody's on board, but if the player's like, I basically just burned the whole town down. Every time you go to a new town, it's, that's disrupting the game, you know what I mean?
There's, there's also the very real consideration of, uh, sometimes people say, yeah, I'm okay with it just because they're nice and they're not actually okay with it.
Yeah.
You gotta have that deeper level of communication with your roleplay. Um, definitely, if I was in a, um, it was like a. Like I used to do public, um, jamming for the, the thing happened. In the world, all over the world.
Hmm.
Um.
The thing that will not be named.
The thing, uh, look, John John, I want you to stay monetized.
Thanks, man. I appreciate.
But, um. But, uh, I used to do like open gaming at, uh, stores, which is a great way to, um, flex. Uh, to, you know, just work out the GM muscles. Uh, and become a better GM is to volunteer to GM at a store, just for whoever shows up all the time. Especially works if you're like walking distance to a place where you can do it. Anyway, point being is I did that for a while and if. I, I got these people that are like, oh, I wanna do this cool thing. And I was like, that would be great, but this isn't the setting to do that in.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Um, so it's certainly, certainly in a con game would not be the setting for that.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, okay, I think we answered that question. Uh, why don't we move on?
I like that question. It's a good question.
Great question. I love that kind of stuff.
Great question.
Uh, James, you may or may not be able to answer this question. I think that's fine. Can you give us some rejected ideas when designing CP Red? This is from my boy Raf.
That's a cool question. I can answer this.
Awesome.
Um, totally, totally. Thank you for, you know, being cool about it though.
Yeah.
Um. Uh. Early on, I was working on, um, how to trigger the crits.
Hmm.
Um.
So double, double six is how it is now.
Double six is how it is now. Um. I, I had, uh, we tried all different crit numbers. Uh, I tried, uh, any double. Oh, I think we've talked about this before.
Mm-hmm.
I mentioned this before.
Yeah.
Um, no, I gotta give them something I didn't mention before. Uh, anyway. Pre, the, the design that didn't work when we moved to double sixes was, um. Any double.
Yeah, whoa, that happened way too often, yeah.
Uh, yeah, it would happen way too often. And you'd always be looking like you're playing, um, like you're playing a. A, a spotting game, a double spotting game. Every time you roll the dice, at least it would make everybody look at what you're rolling, but, um. But the, it just happened too much and it was disruptive to gameplay. Um, other stuff that was rejected. Um.
What do we think about stuff that was? I know, right? What's something from 2020 that you just had to really think about? You know, completely changing. I know auto fire is one of those things, obviously.
Um.
But is there anything else? Oh, what about, um, did you guys ever have stun checks? Cuz 2020 had that. You took it out right away?
It, that was in a discussion. We, we knew that it needed to go.
Yeah.
It's such a, um, it's a check that you would have to happen every time you take damage. Uh, and theoretically would have to happen on every NPC as well, every time they damage. So it's. It would have increased times, uh, by thirty percent alone. And I don't have that kind of, um, budget in terms of the turn time. How much turn time I can allow a turn to take before people start getting pizza. Um, you know what I mean? Uh, people start getting up and saying, I'm gonna go get a glass of water and, and then, oh, hell breaks loose. Um. Yeah, uh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. You can't think of anything. It's fine.
It's been a long time.
How about this? How about this? You, throughout this month, you'll remember next time, if you have any that you remember.
Try that. We'll try that question again next month.
Yeah. There you go, Raf.
You can edit this part out.
Yes, I don't, it's fine. I, I heavily edit.
You're, you're fine. I don't do anything. For the watch time, you know, only kids watch.
Look, there's people in their cars right now that are like, just keep talking. I don't care. I just wanna get through the day.
Right, right. Keep talking. I'm in traffic. Shout out to anyone in traffic right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry that you have to be in traffic. I hate it.
I hope you get where you, you, you wanna go.
Yeah, me too. Safely. Next question?
Drive safe. Yeah, next question. Give me the next question.
Alright, this is from Bracy. How to run a one-on-one campaign for a fixer? Should I use sidekicks to fill out the party? Can we also get some more of James OP characters, please? Oh, Jeff Bracy. Sorry, Jeff, thank you so much for the question.
Jeff, this is, this is a good question. Um, multi-part though. Um, first off. Duet games, you with one other, the GM and one player, super good in red.
Yeah.
Uh. The downtime stuff is where you gotta, um, you gotta put a lot of stuff into the downtime. A fixer character is a good one-player, um, sort of character, but. Realistically, multi-classing is your friend. Um, don't be afraid to change the game. Um, to make it more one-player friendly, like, don't be afraid to give them, um. Like. Um. The ability to multi-class multiple times if they're into that. Um, don't be afraid to, uh. Because essentially in a one-player game, their enjoyment is being, um, imbalanced. Is not gonna destabilize the balance in between them and the other players. Essentially. The great part about a duet is that you can focus entirely on one story and one player. Where if it's a three-person game, then me focusing on one player has the other guy being like, hey, man, what's up? What's going on? Focus on this other thing the whole time. I love those games of those type. Um. Any advice for the fixer? Uh, the access, getting the access. Uh, is important. I would, um, I would run NPCs. Um, but I wouldn't run them yourself. I would have them, um. Because there's likely to be like, he, they're gonna like hire people and stuff. Um, there are rules for hiring people. Um, in terms of, uh, hiring people upfront and they don't get paid on the backend. I believe that's in the services page. And you can, you can work out like, what's the, I wanna hire a world-class assassin for an hour. Um, you could also work out the, I meet a guy. Uh, I wanna convince him to maybe take a job. Um, that's also doable. Um, I would make the stat blocks and then give it to the player to run. As like a second character and then just say, hey, if you act. Um, differently than this character would act. I have the right to be like, no, he couldn't do that.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Um, to stop. That type of thing, but you probably wouldn't have to cuz if you're in a place where you're having a really comfortable duet game with another person. You likely know their style of play very well. Um, and if you're being successful in that game, then. Then you likely don't need the, um, don't need the advice past that point. Um, anyway, I hope that helps. Uh, in terms more, more OP characters. Um. I think that, uh. Anybody can be pretty OP in this game with the right skills. Um, so it's a combo I can share. Um, I, yes. Um, if you get the multi-eye mount. Um, you can put the maximal amount of eyes in the multi-optic mount as you play. And if you're a fixer, you can slowly fill those eyes with the, um. With the. The dart gun thing. And that's a way to get concealable forty-six damage.
Oh.
Um.
There you go. That's another OP character.
It's, it's not an OP character, really.
Yeah, that's all great advice, by the way.
You, um. Uh. So. The dart gun can only fire non-basic arrows. You can't fire the basic arrows, but you can fire expanding arrows. And if you still want cheap darts, you can fire rubber.
There you go. Yeah.
Um, anyway, there you go.
Yeah, I, I agree with James. Uh, I've done dozens, maybe even hundreds of hours of one-on-one. That's how I learned how to play Cyberpunk. My buddy, me and him, we dueted for. Man, years. He was a game master, then I decided I wanted to give it a shot. And, um, what I've realized with that is there's a new set of challenges with that. The first thing is, you answer the question of what are we supposed to do? There should, you should never have to think about what to do. Because it's only one player. You can focus on their backstory. You can focus on people close to them. And you can really just explore every inch of this character cuz it's appropriate to do that. It's just that one player. But when it comes to like combat and multiple mechanics, multiple NPCs. You do fall the risk of playing as like, you know, you're the one-man show. And he's just there to participate. So you gotta be careful with that. You gotta be, make sure that. He has, uh, or sorry, your, your player has, uh, some say in the allied NPCs. And how they're going to interact with him. Uh, would, I keep saying him cuz I'm thinking of my friend, my guy friend, that, uh, that I played with.
I'm thinking about my little brother.
Yeah.
Situation with.
So, yeah, with my buddy, with him, I just made sure that the NPCs fit. As allies with him. There were people that he could see himself working with. So I had to modify how they would behave because I had to make sure that these are people that he would want to interact with. The people that he doesn't wanna interact with are the ones that are gonna be setting obstacles and stuff like that in front of him. So. So there it is. Uh, I hope that answered your question, Jeff Bracy. Uh, sounds like a lot of fun. Uh, happy gaming to you and your buddy. This is from Grim. I am a new DM and I was wondering what CP 2020 books would be good to get for Cyberpunk Red? Grim, thank you so much for your question. And I wanna set the record straight, DM, GM, referee, doesn't matter. It's all the same. Let it go, people. Alright, folks, let it go. That's. That's my PSA. Uh.
Everybody can be anybody. Anybody can run a dungeon. Anyone can run a game.
Yeah.
You know? Uh, you just have to, you just have to choose one of them and you have to take an oath. Where if anyone else is, has decided to use a different terminology, like if you see, if I'm the GM and I see a DM on the street. That's it.
Yeah.
It's war. Pull out the gun.
Why don't we do lightning round? Because there's so many Cyberpunk 2020 books. To, that are like, that are essential. And I'm not just saying like, oh, you can skip this one. No, there's like essential books. If you really wanna like go down this rabbit hole. So James, you say a book, I'll say a book. We'll do that for a little.
Nice book. Just got, first one you gotta say.
Um, I'm gonna cheat and say all the Chromebooks.
Hmm. Yeah, the Chromebooks are really fun. Um, I would say, uh. Uh, Wildside.
Great, great choice.
Fixer book. The fixer book is really good.
Yeah, uh, Home of the Brave.
Yeah, Home of the Brave. Um, that one's good. That one's. Um. I like the, um, I like the, uh, I like Pacific Rim.
Pacific Rim's nice.
Because it's got a lot of content that's, uh.
Martial arts.
That's, well, I like the, I like the background and world flavor. Um, like you get to learn about how an Arasaka, um, employee is. Um, like you get to learn about how an Arasaka, um, employee is like, what they, how they go to school before they even show up on day one, you know? Uh, that's super cool.
Uh, Neo-Tribes, great for understanding nomads, learning about nomads and what they're all about.
I would, I would say at this point, it's, uh, uh, we've reached the, this is world understanding stuff. And past this, it's like, are you planning on going into space?
You're right. You're right. You're right. I think fix, the fixer book is the only like really essential. Cause every, every role has its own, I think except for med tech. I don't know. I don't think med tech ever got its own book.
Well, techie and med tech used to be the, the same role in 2020.
So the, each, each role kind of has its own book. There's the rocker boy book. There's blah, blah, blah. The fixer one is really special. It's really special because there's actually a mechanic in it that you don't see in any of the other supplements called the contacts system. And it's really well done. I mean, you could easily port it over to Red and it's also a great way to, to just understand how you make contacts in the world of Cyberpunk, even if you're not a fixer.
I will say, if you're playing in a duet and the person is playing a lawman, you need to read.
Protection sir.
You need to protect the server. Cause it's, you're, that's how you're gonna get the like, you'd be able to act like the, you'll be court martialed if you do that. Uh, you'll get to run all those narratives if you have that book.
It's got such a good cover on it too. It's like that eighties cop.
Yes, 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 yes. I gave it. I, I let my friend borrow my copy when she was, uh, she was going for the, uh, police, police exam in Seattle. Uh, she was, she was very, uh, very enthused. She was like, this is pretty close.
This is what I want to be.
Um,
All right, um, let's do one more before we wrap things up. Uh, the, actually there's two more. Should we just go? Oh no, there isn't two more. There's way more.
Okay, wow.
Oh, sorry. I sw, I didn't see this other page.
What?
There's another page. Okay, what armor can be concealed? Is the go-to light armor jack visible or is it integrated inside normal clothes? If not, can it be concealed under clothes? This is from Lomis. He is part of the Cyberpunk Red Foundry group that makes that awesome system.
So yeah, first off, thank you for your work on the Foundry thing. Um, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Uh, second, um, I would say Kevlar and under. If you're wearing a light armor jack, people know it's a light armor jack. Um, if it's otherwise, it, a rule will say that. Um, I'll, uh, that's, that's all you need to know. We'll see you in Black Chrome for more. But, uh, that's, that's, uh, that's, that's, that's the, if it's Kevlar or under, it can be totally concealable. Of course, you can always see it with a skill. So it's never totally concealable because it can be detected.
Yeah. Sounds good. Uh, let's do one more since that was so fast.
Yeah.
The Woodchipper's DLC suggests weapon upgrades can have quality. The Budget Arms Triple Treat has a poor-quality under-barrel grenade launcher. Does this mean you can find poor slash excellent quality upgrades? Does this mean the price also scales as per page 342 in the core book? Example, can I buy a hundred Eddie poor under-barrel grenade launcher or a 500 Eddie excellent under-barrel grenade launcher? Keep up the good work. Ryan. Thank you, Ryan.
No, Ryan. That is not what that means. Um, it, when we give weapon qualities to things like that in an exotic, uh, we're doing it to, um, for that exotic. Uh, and, uh, one of the reasons we have that tool is that so that we can balance those exotics. It does not imply the existence of other items that we have not, um, set out. Um, that being said, it's a hundred percent something that you can do if you're a tech. You can invent the stuff that doesn't exist. And if you have a normal one, if you have a normal quality grenade launcher under barrel and you're a tech, you could totally say, I want to upgrade that piece, that under barrel. Because as an under barrel, uh, it is a separate item. So I can upgrade that separate item again. And then me putting it on another thing, oh, that's, that's just me putting together some items like they're supposed to be. Um, so yes, but only through texts.
Great advice.
And only if your GM thinks it's okay. Cause there's some weird things that you can do, okay? Um, under that logic, if you extrapolate it out.
Yeah.
I'll, uh, your GM to decide.
Yeah, uh, game masters, I give you permission to use this as homebrew and make poor-quality grenade launchers that jam. And please remember, don't be like me. If it jams, it still fires. Okay? Don't be like me.
It jams after.
Yeah, it jams after.
At the shootout and then jams after. There are things that, um, jam before, but the big thing there is it probably blows itself up. Cause the bullet gets stuck and then the bullet goes somewhere it's not supposed to into the gun and then that.
And you got a whole situation.
Then you need to get another gun.
Yeah, that's it. All right, James, thank you so much. Uh, this is the end of Night City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. Remember, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. That's where you can send me your questions. I'll add it to the list. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you all so much for supporting the show, the Patreon and watching Under the Crimson Sky. And, um, is there anything that you would like to say before we sign off, Mr. Mayor?
I would like to say, thank you for all the amazing questions. The question quality has improved markedly. I want to see more questions about, like you heard today. Um, people are, people are getting better with the system. They're asking better questions. Love to answer it.
Yeah, it's great. People are like exploring all the little corners of the system. It's fun.
It's fun.
Yeah. All right, guys. Now Night City Council is adjourned. Thank you so much. We'll see you guys next time. All right? Happy gaming. Bye. Uh, don't do this, James.
Thank you to all the patrons. You chums make everything possible. And John John appreciates it.